Okay, we'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Miller? Miller? Rosado?
Here.
Ak? Here. Knopf?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Aaron? Here. Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler? Meitzler? Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Jerome?
Here.
And McFadden. We have 11 out of 14.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Miller is here.
Oh, thank you. Got it.
Okay, second up on the agenda tonight is reminder to please speak directly into your microphone so that we can get this recorded to share with public. Next up would be items that are moved, added, or changed. I don't believe we have any tonight. We'll move right on then to item number four, which is matters from the public. Laura, do we have anybody that is wanting to speak for matters from the public?
If there are members of the public who would like to speak on matters that are not on the agenda, if you could please use the hand icon to raise your hand, I can activate your microphone. Okay, we have no one indicating that they have a matter not on the agenda.
Okay, then we'll move on to number five, item number five, which is the consent agenda. Alderman Chantet?
We have two items, to reject bids for the 2021 West Side Property Ordinance and an ordinance 21-07 declaring certain electric transformers to be surplus property. I would move that we approve the consent agenda, Ezra.
Back in, Rosado. Okay, motion by Chantet, second by Rosado. Roll call, please.
Chantet? Chantet?
Aye.
Aaron? Aye. Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler? Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
McFadden? Miller? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Ak? Enna?
Aye.
Motion carrying 12 to 0.
All right, thank you. Next up would be item number six, which is ordinance 20-75, landmark designation for 210 North Washington Avenue. Alderman, Callahan, do you have this?
I do. This is a continuation of the presentation in the meeting that we had on December 15th for this landmark designation at the time the petitioner was not here, and I do believe I see her at the moment. Scott, do you want to, are you taking this or is Jeff?
I can start.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't really have anything to add from our, from our last meeting other than answer any questions, but I know, yes, Dora Shear, the applicant, is here also representing the Historic Preservation Commission, and I know she has some, some comments that she would like to make, so I would just let her make her comments at this point.
Yep. Thank you. Ms. Shear?
Say thank you. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. I would like to review the mission of the Historic Preservation Commission and the process we use to reach our decision to apply for landmark status for 210 North Washington Avenue. When the city of Batavia established the Historic Preservation Commission in 2002, its mission was to help protect the historic areas and structures in the city. The HPC works to identify structural problems in the buildings in the downtown historical district and works with owners to correct problems. We are available to help historic property owners with rehabilitation, rehabilitation questions. In 2016, the HPC updated the design guidelines to reflect the building materials available today. The HPC has gone on record as wanting to work with building owners and not hinder them as we preserve our historic buildings and cultures. We are also responsible for reviewing all the evidence for any proposed landmark structure or historic history. After reviewing the application, our recommendations are passed on to City Council. It should be noted that our landmark status application process is nearly identical to the process in Geneva and St. Charles, and none require homeowner approval. Part of our mission is to ensure that Batavia's historic, historical structures and culture are not destroyed through demolition unless the structure is not salvageable. Upon hearing that the last surviving Condi owner of 210 North Washington lost the home to foreclosure and that the home became bank-owned, the HPC discussed the various measures that could be taken to ensure that this historical structure did not lose its identity and was no longer recognizable. We concluded that gaining landmark status was the only solution to saving the Condi house from being changed or demolished now or in the future. I volunteered to fill out the application and file it. I did this because I care about the history of Batavia and the buildings and the culture of the early settlers that made Batavia the community it is today. I also personally love this house because my home was on the south side. My family lived there from 1951 to sometime in 1960. The HPC spent several hours reviewing landmark application for 210 North Washington Avenue. We listened to testimony from Mayor Jeff Schelke and from me as the applicant about the Condi family and their place in the history and culture of Batavia. I included personal testimony from my time living there when Guy and Al Condi were alive. There are 11 criteria for landmarking a structure, but only one of the criteria needs to be met to qualify the structure for landmark status. The HPC went through each of the criteria individually and voted yes or no on each one. The Condi house met five of these criteria as follows. Criteria A: Has significant value as part of the historic heritage or cultural characteristics of the community, county, state, or nation. HPC response: The Condis were early settlers in Batavia in 1841. The home was constructed starting in 1845. While there are many old homes in Batavia, there are very few homes left from such early settlers. Seven generations of the Condi family lived in the home for over 175 years until mid-2020. This distinction caught the attention of the Chicago Historical Society, and some of their staff made a trip to Batavia to see this house. Criteria B: Is identified with a person or persons who significantly contributed to the development of the community, state, or nation. HPC response: Cornelius B. Condi opened a blacksmith shop shortly after arriving in 1841. Several of the Condi ancestors have played roles in the development of Batavia. His granddaughter, Louise White, was a public school educator, and the Northeast Side Elementary School is named in her honor. Cornelius' great-great-great-grandson is Mayor Schelke. Criteria B.C. is representative of the distinguishing characteristics of architecture inherently valuable for the study of period type, method of construction, or use of indigenous materials. HPC response: The large widow's lodge platform in the center of the roof is a unique feature. The framework still sits atop the roof to this day. Criteria D: Has a unique location or singular physical characteristic that make it an established or familiar visual feature. HPC response: The home sits atop what was once the highest point in Batavia. The home's location and unique architectural feature, this large widow's lodge platform, allowed neighboring residents to view the Great Chicago Fire in 1871. Criteria J: Is suitable for preservation or restoration. HPC response: The home is suitable for preservation and restoration based on the home's exterior. As you can see, the HPC followed its mission and used its landmarking to make the recommendation for landmark status for 210 North Washington. The vote on a motion to approve landmark status for the Condi home was unanimous. As the applicant, I abstained from voting. It is important for you to know the timeline regarding this application. September 21st, 2020. I filed the application for landmark status with the owner. This was sent by certified mail to Bill Selman, Federal National Mortgage Association, Plano, Texas. September 24th, 2020. A contract to purchase the house was submitted. This is now a sale. October 7th, 2020. Contract on the house closed, and it was sold. Thank you. I hope this information will be considered as you make your decision on the landmark application for the Condi home at 210 North Washington Avenue.
Thank you, Ms. Shear, for all of that information. I apologize that we were not able to hear from you at the last meeting. I know there were some technical difficulties that couldn't get you on, and that's why we felt it important to make sure that as the applicant, you were able to present us with all of the information as the petitioner for this property and also as a member of the HPC outlining, aligning the mission so that it's helpful for understanding as to why you chose this property. I also think it's important, as I had heard from HPC Chairman Holman earlier today, just to point out, as you had said, even though you were the petitioner of this and a member of HPC, you did refrain and abstain from voting on this so that you weren't judge and jury on doing this. So it did add that extra layer of you as an, as I would say, a private citizen in this case filing that, because I am well aware of your interest in the, in the history of this town, and I, I thank you for all your efforts in that. Does anyone have any, does anyone have any questions for the applicant or staff? Joe?
Ms. Shear, thank you very much. Getting that bit of information from you, I think, has been extremely helpful, and I appreciate it. I'm glad you're here tonight. I'm glad we could hear, hear all of that. I did have an opportunity to go back through some of the HPC minutes from some of the prior meetings and saw where this property was discussed prior to September, and that was reassuring, a bit of reassurance for me, because one of my concerns when I first saw this was the timing. It, it looked a little muddled, and I wanted to make sure that, that everything was, was done properly there, and thank you for that. I really appreciate that. I know one of the other things that we talked about at the, the meeting in December was making sure we follow the process that is outlined in the city code when it comes to placing a landmark designation on a piece of property, and that's outlined in city code title 12-4-1. And the, the concern we had is making sure we get this one right, because it's the first one we've seen come before city council since the establishment of the Historic Preservation Committee. We want to make sure that we're absolutely dotting the i's and crossing the t's when, when we're about to burden a, a property owner with following the guidelines of HPC, and I fully appreciate and understand and support the mission of HPC. And, and that's why, and at the same time, we've got to be cognizant of the property owner's rights and make sure that we follow the process, and I'm going to say, to the letter. There's a couple of things that the nomination form does not have on it that are required per 1241, and those are the, the things that are missing on the nomination form, and I also understand at the time the nomination went in, some of these pieces may not have been known, the name and address of the property owner, and then the way it's spelled out in 1241 is that the property owner is notified, and then the, the nomination is submitted, and one of the pieces of information you have to have on the form is the date you notified the property owner. The notification of the property owner is shown on the form. That date is after the submission date. They were done in the reverse order. So the only thing I would like to see happen is the nomination form reversion to include the name and address of the property owner and clarification on the dates so that property owners notified before the, the nomination is submitted, and then I think we've dotted the i's, crossed the t's, followed our process, and made sure that we're doing everything the right way that gets a historic property properly designated as landmark for our area. At the same time, it follows the process to give the, the homeowner some amount of protection. Thank you very much for all your efforts. I appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is the homeowner on the line? Does she wish to?
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's Heidi Hoff. I also want to clarify the dates. I actually was pending on the house in August and fully closed and purchased the house three days after her submission. At no point in time again was I notified being the homeowner, so just want to reiterate that point that nobody contacted me. So if you're voting on whether or not the letter of the law was followed to a t, it most certainly was not, and this is causing me a tremendous amount of anxiety. I don't want this. I don't have the resources to use these materials. I don't have the time to go through this process. And I also did my due diligence and made sure that I bought a house that was not designated as a historic home. And I also want to reiterate, I have no plans on demolishing or changing the structure or integrity of this house. I just don't feel like this decision needs to be made without my consent or without me even involved in the very beginning of this process. It is truly unfair.
I believe there was, Joel had, did Joel explain some of this last time, the process, or was that, was that you, Jeff, on it, about what needs to be done?
Yeah, that was, that was, that was me. Yeah.
Okay, that's.
Correct.
I forgot, it's been so long.
Sure.
But I think we, there were some of the concerns that she is stating about what she can and can't do. Can we maybe explain some of what the concerns that she was stating that, so there's, there's a better understanding that some of these things are not as insurmountable, especially with the application that HPC has on other parcels, what the requirements are.
Sure.
It's not a, it's not as in some other communities where it may seem much more cumbersome on homeowners. We do not have that.
Yeah. I'd be happy to, to go over that again. Ms. Hoff and I did, did have a conversation yesterday, and, and I, you know, brought up some of these items. The, the process right now, the, if this is landmarked, and, and obviously that's still a question mark yet, but if it does go through and is approved, the, this would not affect anything that is done to the interior of the home. The designation does not affect any renovations that you do to the interior of the home. It strictly deals with the appearance of the exterior of the structure, things like siding, roofing, changing windows, porches, you know, anything you would do to the exterior of the structure. So also, I would note in this specific ordinance, the way it was crafted, because the, the Historic Commission wanted to be very clear that they weren't concerned with the accessory structure with the apartment that's, that's above the garage on the side. They also weren't concerned with the pool that's on this, on the property. They really were concerned with the main house itself. They were concerned with the step coming up from Batavia Ave, or I'm sorry, excuse me, Washington, North Washington Avenue. Those were the items they felt needed to be preserved, and so the ordinance does reflect that those are the items we're talking about. Also, because of the people that are on the commission, you know, the mayor is very careful about who he nominates to put on the commission because he wants people that are willing to work with homeowners and with business owners. He doesn't want people put on the commission who are, you know, super hardcore preservationists who aren't willing to consider alternate materials or newer materials. And they have been very good about that when they, when they've reviewed these, these different petitions or different applications from owners in the downtown historic district now about what they want to do. They're very open to newer materials, alternative materials, as long as they keep the character of the historic structure.
Thank you, Jeff. And as we had a four and a half hour, five hour meeting last night with lots of input from residents and lots of emails on a different parcel of property, it is important to not only the HPC and this council, but it is important to this community to maintain a certain character and preservation for our downtown area and a lot of the business or a lot of the existing structures that we do have. So that is a community value. This isn't one person's view over it. We as a value, we as a, we as a community do value our historic buildings and try to preserve them as best as possible. Jeff, to Joe's point about making sure that the, the process is followed as outlined, what would be the, what would be the procedure for amending the original application as outlined, and would it have to then go through HPC again?
Well, I mean, that's a question we, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, and does that, does that start the process over? Do we just, can we have it amended and go through either another count or straight to council if, if advanced?
Yeah, that, that would be something I would have to, I would have to check with legal counsel. There was some emails that were sent today, and I said in the emails, I do believe, I still do believe the process was followed. Yes, the application was filed on the 21st. However, the application was not accepted or deemed complete until the 29th, when the certification of the owner being notified, the owner at the time being notified was put in the mail. So that happens fairly frequently. We do that on a lot of zoning applications, and Scott can jump in here too, if he, you know, has anything he wants to add. But a lot of times when we get an application, there may, may be an item or two missing. We don't just totally say, we're not going to accept the application. We accept the application, we put the application on hold, and we don't consider the application complete and start the process until we receive all the documents, and that's, that's what happened in this case. It was filed on the 21st. The subsequent things that were missing were filed on the 29th, and that's when the application was deemed complete and went through the process. So, I mean.
Yeah.
What, what would happen if, if we had to, if we had to go back and, and I'm not, I'm not 100% sure. That is something Scott can jump in or Laura can jump in, but I'm not sure whether we would have to go through the entire public hearing process again, or, you know, whether amending the application and bringing to Cala Council would be enough. I'm not sure.
Yeah, and I, as Jeff said, I mean, we, we typically will accept applications for zoning and building permits that are not complete, but we don't, unless it's something that's just, you know, completely defective, we will not turn it away. We'll just say, you know, get these different documents to us, and then once that happens, then it'll be considered complete. I'm not sure that the deficiencies in this case would be enough to be creating a situation where the application is not effective, because those things were cured prior to us considering the application formally filed. So I think, in my opinion, I think it's a valid petition. I don't think we actually need to do any, make any changes to that, because the, the deficiencies were corrected before we considered it an official application.
I agree.
There's many other examples that, that have been over the years with exception, accepting of facade grants and approvals, and that is normal, normal course of business on a lot of this, correct? Laura, I'm sorry, you had, you were saying something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say just back of what you just said, that there were numerous other examples where someone might submit an application, but it is not deemed accepted and allowed to move forward in the process until that application is deemed complete.
Joe?
Those applications that you're talking about were submitted by the homeowner, by the property owner for the furtherance of something the, the property owner, homeowner was wanting to do. So I can see where you'd hold it and have it in limbo until some of those things were complete, some of those additional requirements. I can understand that, and that's where I want to be very careful in what we're doing here. This isn't something that the homeowner is asking for. Somebody else is asking for it instead of the homeowner, and, and that's where I think there's, there's a distinction between those two examples. Scott, I, I really appreciate what you said. They were, they were able to be cured before they were processed, before they were considered. Is, is that our standard going forward with other properties that are going to go through a landmark designation process? That it's, it's cured before it's considered, and that's okay?
Well, I mean, as long as, when we actually consider a petition valid, you know, that everything is in place that the ordinance requires, then, then I would say yes. I mean, otherwise, just like a building permit or anything else, you know, the standard would be to say, I'm sorry, it's not complete. Here, take this back and come back when you're, when you're done with it. And, you know, frankly, that's probably going to, you know, irritate a lot of people if we, you know, tell the homeowner, you're, I'm sorry, your shed permit doesn't have a plat of survey. Go back and try again. So I, I think, I think it's customer friendly, and I think it's also business friendly to, you know, allow us to accept those applications and just say, look, you know, we'll, we'll accept this information, but we're not going to consider it complete until you get us X, Y, and Z.
Laura?
Just to add on to that, occasionally when the homeowner is making an application for things such as variance, that variance could be very well a detriment to other neighbors who might be affected by that variance. And so I, I think that's kind of an analogous situation, that we would not allow the variance to move forward in its process until the notice requirements that are part of that process had been met for the application to be complete. So very similar situation.
That's correct, and that was, that was something I was going to mention too, is that, you know, that the zoning applications that we receive, plan developments, zoning variances.
that the zoning applications that we receive, plan developments, zoning variances are very similar that, you know, while they are done by the property owner, there is a potential effect on neighbors and neighborhoods for what's happening. So we do want to make sure that all of those procedures are followed before we proceed with moving that forward through any zoning process as well.
I wanted to note that Ms. Hoff also has her hand raised and has more to add. It looks like you're just self muted.
Ah, now I unmute myself. I would, I would like to add that this process wasn't followed at all considering that I, the current homeowner, was not informed properly. I also would like to add that I think that this has tremendous impact around my neighbors. I do not live in the historic district and yet you're trying to deem my house a historic home. This has ramifications aside from just me. And considering that this was done very quickly after I was pending to buy the house, closing three days afterwards and not informed, and came upon this whole scenario by freak luck that you could have done this behind my back. So I would like, I would like to go through this process. I feel like I have the right to go through this process. I don't feel like I've been included up until the nth hour. And to me, that's not acceptable. I don't think it also sets a precedent for anybody else in the city of Batavia.
Because I'm not sure that it has been mentioned at this meeting, part of the process was to send notice via certified mail. Realizing the address of the home. And the post office tried to deliver that twice.
And I didn't, how many times I have to say this? I got no notification from anybody, not so much as a post-it note on my door.
Which address, which address are you planning to be at?
Pardon?
Which addresses is your address?
I have both addresses. You can send mail to 211 Spring Street. You can send mail to 210 North Washington.
Okay, so the certified mail was sent to the 210 North Washington and we also sent it by regular mail as well. Are you receiving mail at that address?
I receive mail at that address, yes. I receive packages, I receive shipments, I receive materials.
I can't explain why the post office, you know, didn't deliver it. Normally they leave a note on your door.
You keep saying certified mail. Where is any sort of notification? Where is any sort of little piece of paper saying that they even attempted it? I've seen nothing. Do you really think if I'm this vehemently against it, that I would just ignore something? Or, you know, disregard it and hope it goes away? No, I would have been at these meetings. This is not something that I want. And I would have been involved early in the process if it had been followed to A.T.
I can just, I can just note, you know, Ms. Hoff and I have discussed this too. I understand what she's saying. I have, I have the certified letter in front of me actually, right now.
Good that you do, but I don't.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that. And the notes from the post office on it are that they left notices on 10/24, 10/29, and 11/10. And then they returned it to us, to the sender as unclaimed on 12/9. So I, as Scott said, I don't think we have an explanation as to why it wasn't delivered. It was attempted to be delivered, I don't know.
But we also sent it by regular mail, correct, Jeff?
That is correct, yes.
And again, I reiterate, I received nothing.
Okay, so what would be the desire of council to do on this pending matter at this point? We have another week on this before the, I mean, we still have two weeks to go before this would go to a final vote at council, correct?
Correct. Next city council, February 19th.
So we could, as a matter, hand this or table this until the next Cal where we can obtain some, I guess, determination from council that, and obtain a legal opinion from the city attorney, that the determination has or has not been followed, that would require the process, which I believe Ms. Hoff had originally intended to avoid, which was not going through a lot of procedure on this. But if it is her request and if it is the opinion of the city attorney, then we would have to wait and see what he says. That's a...
Marty, may I also make a suggestion that, you know, if it is something that, you know, the attorney will probably say that, you know, she has noticed because she's at the meeting at this point in time. But, you know, the concern is that, you know, she didn't get due process to have her case heard in front of the HPC. You could remand it back to the HPC and have them, you know, talk it over again with her and give her notice about the date and everything else that it would be heard at. Obviously, that's going to delay the process a little bit because we have to schedule that in front of the HPC as well. But that's certainly an option to consider as well.
Scott, that's kind of not what I heard in terms of what we need to check with the attorney on. I think it was to Alderman Knopf's point about the difference between the date that the application was submitted versus the date that the application was accepted because notice had been made to the owner at that time. So I think at that time is on September 29th. And at that time, the owner was the bank.
No, at that time I was the owner. I closed on the 24th of September. In the middle of August, I was pending to close on the property.
Yeah, so as far as we know, you know, we had no idea who actually owned the property at any given time. We were advised by Fannie Mae that the closing actually happened on the 28th and that the document wasn't recorded until October 7th. So we did not have any constructive notice about that until Fannie Mae let us know that, you know, no, we've closed on this property. And then the deed was then recorded on the 7th. So that was made into the public record at that point in time.
I closed on the 24th of September.
I'm just telling you what Fannie Mae told me. So maybe you close on 24th, but Fannie Mae said it was the 28th.
I think based on those information, the best information would be to be prudent to obtain the direction and advice from council. We do have time where this would not be set for a final determination to council for two weeks anyways. We have the subsequent and intervening Cal on this. We can obtain the information, we can obtain the documentation so that council can make a determination to us. And if he advises that it is a process, then we, a motion could be made to make a determination at that point. Or if the determination is to remand back to HPC, then that's another option. We would have our options available to us at that point. All parties are notified on this call at this point. The city's notified, the applicant, I'm pretty sure HPC is aware, and the homeowner. At that point, there is, there is nothing pending with any immediacy affecting any of this for one week. And all parties are having their due process considered. Does anyone have any objection to that?
Marty, Zaln?
Go ahead.
I'm okay with that. I guess the one question I would have is, I know like if we have just about every other thing that we have happened in the city, we have a process. If somebody wants to disagree with that or wants to stop it, say an SSA or anything else, is there a process or something listed if somebody disagrees with a landmark designation for a property? How that process works or what that process would be?
I mean, that's essentially, you know, somebody nominates a property. It goes through the process of going to the HPC. If the HPC thinks it's not worthy, then it would probably end at the HPC level. But if they feel that it is, then it comes in front of council and council has the final decision on whether or not to landmark it or not.
Correct, yeah. Landmarks, landmark designation can only be done by ordinance voted on by the councils. So that's, you know, the Historic Preservation Commission is the recommending body on that, so.
Okay. I guess I'd feel best if it went back to HPC and went through with, you know, information or testimony from the homeowner before we vote on it. Now, again, I think you need to find out from legal advice whether or not the steps we took were right, wrong, you know, indifferent to the process. You know, I'd like that answer before we do anything else with it.
Alderman, come on. This is Alderman Miller.
Go ahead.
I have a question. Is there any reason this wasn't brought before HPC for a landmark designation before this?
I guess I don't understand the question. I mean, there was a public hearing held in front of the HPC. Are you, are you mentioning, are you speaking that previous years?
Yeah, I'm asking all the time before right now. This could have, this process could have happened years ago. Is there a reason it didn't happen? But...
Yeah, I think that the reason why it didn't happen was because up to that point, for the last 175 years, it has been owned by the same family. And when the last family member left the home and it fell into ownership of the bank, Jeff and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, we actually had inquiries to the Community Development Department whether or not there was any, whether it was in a historic district or whether there were any restrictions on demolition of the property. And...
That's correct, yeah.
Came back to our Historic Preservation Commission to let them know that this house that had for 175 years been in the same family had a significant history attached to it. We were now receiving inquiries from potential new owners, whether it may be demolished or not, and whether, given that circumstance, there might be reason that someone would want to make the application to protect it.
And Laura, HPC, or Jeff, if you know, HPC and the landmark designation ordinance was created in what year?
2006, I believe.
Okay. So it's not, even if it was in the ownership of the family for 175 years, it's not been available during that time to landmark it during that process? It's shortened the gap, I think, to the spirit of what Alderman Miller is saying. You know, it's not been years and years, it's been 14 years, that the availability since the landmark designation has availed itself. And this was the opportunity that the applicant felt was the time for that process.
Just to kind of put a little perspective on this, the house went up for sale in, I think, January or February. And it wasn't until in the minutes that the house is going to be sold, so let's put this designation on the house. So you had ample opportunity when this house was first listed to designate this and let a buyer knowingly go into a historic home with a designated preservation. But you chose to wait until the 10th hour as soon as it went pending.
This is Alderman Miller. Are we looking, is HPC looking at other houses within the city of Batavia? Does it make a landmark status?
I mean, that has been a discussion of the Preservation Commission. There have not been any that have been nominated or, you know, applied for it this time. But they have discussed others, you know, that are potential candidates for that. Probably the most prominent one that I can think of right away is Bellevue Place. There have been no, there have been no applications filed at this point.
I think they've also talked about potentially, you know, other districts besides just landmarkings, you know, whether or not...
That's correct, yeah.
Additional districts or add-ons to the current district would be appropriate or not. But, you know, no official action has been taken on any of that.
Just out of curiosity, the mayor's old house across the street from mine just went up for sale. If you were so concerned with neighboring houses and preserving their character, how come you didn't designate that house before it was sold?
So just so, to be clear, this isn't a process that is instigated by the city. It is a process that is instigated by individuals who make the application.
Without informing the owner. Okay, thank you.
Right, and I think that's, Laura, that's important to point out because the city is not the applicant on this. HPC is not the applicant on this. And while the applicant is a member of HPC, she did recuse herself from the vote on that, just to provide that.
Am I correct in understanding that the mayor himself actually testified that my house, without my knowledge, should be designated historic home?
As anyone that is an interested party, the mayor is not acting on behalf of the city at that point. There was no official, the mayor does not have the authority by our system to represent the city in that matter, I believe. And correct me if I'm wrong, he would be representing himself as a citizen of Batavia at that point, is how he was speaking, correct? Jeff, would that be correct?
Yeah, I believe that's correct, yeah. He provided, he provided some history and perspective on the house and the property, yes.
Yeah, this is the mayor. Let me talk here for a minute. Yeah, I had the opportunity to obviously watch this house for probably better than 70 years as it kind of changed face a number of times. And it is true that my great, great, great grandfather, Cornelius B. Condi, was the builder of this house. And he arrived in Batavia from upstate New York around Poughkeepsie, and Glenville was the town he came from, in about 1840. And in about 1845, he purchased some of this land. I don't think he bought the whole lot that's there now, but he bought part of it. And he turned around and he built himself, as I'm understanding, a three-room house on his property. Now Cornelius was a busy guy and by the time it got to be 1848, he had seven kids. And so he obviously needed a bigger house to live in. And so one of the things that then happened was is that someplace, somebody out in California found gold. And so they announced that there was gold to be found in California. So with that news, Mr. Condi rooted himself from Batavia, left his wife and his seven kids in the three-room house on Washington Avenue and headed to California. Now, if I look at the birth records of his nine children that were basically born in this property in some form or fashion, he left in 1848, about February, and he didn't get back till sometime in late 1851. So he was gone for probably almost three years. But when he came back, he was a fairly wealthy man. He had hit gold, he had found it. And so he was able to turn around and make quite a pile of money for himself, apparently. So he came back and he proceeded in that timeframe, late, mid 1850s, to build this house that's there now. And what's interesting about it, we've got a map, I've got a map hanging in my office of the aerial map of Batavia in 1869. And it shows the Condi home is in a different configuration than we know it today. And so I'm led to believe a couple of things have happened here. First, I'm led to believe through my... First, I'm led to believe through my forebears that Mr. Conde took the three-room house and totally encapsulated it within the larger house that he then built when he hit the gold rush. And so that the original house may be someplace, remnants of that may be someplace inside of this. Then he moved in and he kept having all these kids. He got back from the, the west coast and he had two more children. So he had nine kids in total, six daughters and three sons. And from that, he obviously needed a lot of bedrooms and he built a lot of different stuff on. At one point, he built a large porch structure on the entire south side of the house that went from the front of Washington Avenue all the way to the back of the house. And that was there, I think, maybe Doris, was that there when you were living there or they closed that?
Well, the porch that is there now was there when I lived there.
Yeah, that's the porch on the front. I'm going to bust the porch on the side.
To the back, it was from the dining room.
Right. Well, anyway, I've got a picture of the house with a big porch on the south of it. And at some point in time, this thing went through about three or four generations of Conde's. And the last generation to own it was John Conde, who some of you may remember served as a member of the city council for two terms back in the late 1970s. And John was kind of a free spirit. And John just kind of grabbed his hammer and his nails and brought in his friends and he went to work on this house. And he removed the porch in some form or fashion and totally enclosed that. And then he, there was a widow's watch on the top of the roof, which is, you still see remnants of it up there, but he took that off. And he did a variety of things. So I guess in support of, you know, having this thing kind of loosely approved, if you approve it, is the fact that what was the original structure that was put there and started in 1845 and then through all the remodeling and renovations and additions and corrections, this is a much different house than what was there at the very beginning. So the, the historical aspect of the actual structure, my view is not real strong. There's not a lot there that we should say is a landmark because the landmark's been altered, changed, remodeled, done everything possible to it.
And a slight addition of the home that's not original.
One moment, one moment, please. Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, the, the one thing that I, the comment, I guess I, I wouldn't like to make is the fact that as, as a, as a property, we had the Chicago Architectural Commission out here a few years ago and they wanted specifically to walk by this property and I walked them by it. And they wanted to see it because at that time they believed it was maybe one of the very few houses of not the only one in the Chicagoland area that had been owned and occupied by the same family for 170 years at that point in time. So that was kind of the historical significance to it. Now, it used to say the family from the first builder to the last descendant, who was the one that passed away and then it went into this foreclosure, they were free, and they were my cousins, so I'll say this, they were free spirited people and they, they really did, you know, change things, alter things. And there was no presentation of any historical, you know, resignation or, or recording of it by certainly John Conde or anybody else. I appreciate what Doris and the Historical Society Commission are trying to do. But I think the biggest thing is the land that's sitting there is the spot where this house stood for a same family. At the end of the day, I guess they were in there for 175 years. And then they, John died, his wife couldn't continue to pay the mortgage. It fell into some foreclosures and the taxes didn't get paid. And so at the end, Mary Conde had to move out and moved in with a relative over in Blue Page County. And that's kind of what the end of the story of it is. And, you know, I certainly would be interested in trying to work with the new owner and having, sharing whatever records I have about, you know, the, the photos or the pictures of it. But in the same token, I, I gotta tell you, I'm hard pressed to tell you that we're gonna, we need to preserve exactly what's there now because what's exactly there is there now wasn't probably there 30 or 40 years ago in the state that you see it in today. It probably wasn't even there at that point in time because John Conde really, we, we made this place on a number of occasions, including putting the swimming pool in, putting the garage in with an apartment above it. There was all kinds of stuff done here. So it, this is a free spirited house, if there ever was one in Batavia.
Ms. Shear.
The house today looks just like it did when I lived there in 1950, when we moved in. The porch looks the same, everything looks the same.
I, I believe there was a porch there on the south side there, Doris, wasn't there?
Right, there still is. Well, I don't know if they use it as a porch, but.
I thought the porch was gone.
So I guess we have a couple of options. We can vote before the ordinance before us. We can table this until next week to get some clarification. Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, Laura, correct me if I'm wrong. I know we, we do have these situations. While we have not gone through kind of the landmark process, there's always the public good versus homeowner choke points when, when we're doing something. And I gotta think that donut holes and the incorporation of those properties is probably the larger situation that we've had in these scenarios. It's kind of the same thing where residents feel we're doing something against their, their will. And we always make sure that we do it the right way. And we have the entire process. And I believe we've done 100, 180 homes, is that correct? I, I don't know if it's that much, actually.
Quite, it was like 60 homes so far, about 200 total that we were planning.
That's what it is, that's what I'm thinking of, the, how many that are still pending out there. So I will throw out to anyone, do you care to make a motion? Laura?
Alderman Callahan, before you ask for the motion, I just would like to say something about historic preservation, just very briefly. Is what we are most afraid of is a historic home as the things that Doris has outlined in her application. Without designating this, there's the potential that that house could disappear from the, the housing stock in the city of Batavia. And we lose a part of our history then. So as each one of these comes before us, we, I think, have to ask ourselves, is this a part of our Batavia history that's worth protecting?
Yep.
I appreciate what you're saying and that, that goes right in line with what we heard from Ms. Shear. And I, I completely understand where she's coming from. But I contrast that with what we just heard from the mayor. And somebody who, if there's anybody in town that I think knows the history, number one is the mayor and sorry, Ms. Shear, I think you're number two, only because I've heard enough of Mr. Mayor's stories that I really value his insight into the history of the town and what he just explained. He just said he doesn't view this as a landmark, the building itself, so much as on this site way back when this happened. That's more a historic marker than preserving the building. So I'm, I'm kind of torn between those two. We've got opposing viewpoints of people that know the history of the town on what to do with the structure. Where does that leave us? We're, we're, we're stuck in the middle on this one. And it's not a comfortable position.
You know, just to respond to that, Alderman Knapp, it's an excellent point. And it's, I think, the situation that would a marker be enough? So for instance, you know, I, when you look at other structures that have disappeared over the years for lack of historic preservation designation, losing, for instance, the house where Harriet Tubman grew up. We can read about her in history books. Because maybe there would be a plaque someplace that a house once existed, but it doesn't quite represent the same type of homage to that history that preserving the structure does. And I am not, it is up to you to decide whether, based on the information in the application, that this is one of those structures that warrants that protection or not. But I just think it carries more weight. And so is the history that this structure represents worth preserving is the question.
That's where I still go back to the original point. Do we have enough information to, to vote on this tonight? Or is it tabled to next week and, and then decide to the actual question of the matter before us? I think that since there is nothing pressing to this, to this tonight, we do not have the final vote. Then I would move that we table this to next week's COW to obtain the clarifications as to the process. Then depending on the advice of council, then the determination could be made as to the ordinance before us.
I second that.
Anyone?
That was a motion I second, Malley.
Thank you. Jennifer, please call the roll.
Can you pause for one moment, please? Is there allowed discussion at this point? There may be a question.
Oh, sure.
I, I believe that the homeowner would like to make a last statement, if that's okay.
Sure.
I had, you guys are making motions. I would like to see if you guys would consider bouncing it back to the committee and actually letting me be a part of this. That, for me, that seems fair, considering that it wasn't followed to the letter of the law. That would be my way.
Yeah, and that's exactly what we're trying to find out. We are going, since we do not have anything, there is no final vote on this. The motion is to provide it for another week to obtain the direction from council to find out what our options are. Do we send it back? Was it followed? And that, that would be the time where, once we have the information before us, then council can, the majority determination would be to pass the ordinance or to send it back to HPC. But I think that since people have brought up questions regarding the legality and the process, I think it's the most prudent course at this point. And there is a motion and second on the floor. Joe?
Yeah, I want to make sure you understand when we talk about tabling it, there, there is a provision in 12-4 that says if a landmark designation is not approved by council, no nomination or application for designation relating to the same property shall be accepted for 90 days following such denial. That, that I think is another question that, that needs to be presented to council is by sending this back to HPC, we haven't denied it. We've asked for clarification. So, so that portion of 12-4-1 hasn't been enacted? And that would be something I want to make sure we have clarification on.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else have any questions on council? Roll call, please.
Callahan?
Aye.
Mifler? Alay?
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
Miss Adden? Miller?
No.
Miss Adden?
Aye.
Scott? Beck? Can you hear me? I'm sorry, I can't hear Beck. Aye? Thank you. Knapp?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 1.
Thank you. I believe staff will get the memo to us once we learn from Kevin Drundall.
Correct.
Motion is tabled.
Yes.
Thank you. Alan, back to you.
All right. Next up on the agenda tonight would be project status. Laura?
Yes, I just have a few things. I wanted to bring up again what I did yesterday, that the Kane County Health Department on their website has a place where residents can go and register their name and email address and receive information about when the vaccine will be available for them. So people should go ahead and, and go to their website and get signed up to receive information. Also wanted to let you know that today we had internal discussions and also we have a meeting tomorrow with Main Street and Chamber to discuss our One Washington Place Communications Plan. Had a conversation with the owners of Comedy Vault and that agreement will be going to the committee of the whole next week. And then just a reminder that our second city council meeting this week, you know, ordinarily, it's the first and third Mondays. This being a holiday, the third Monday, Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. Our city council meeting will be on the 19th. And that day, Bob Hansen and Jamie Sam will be presenting an annual report about the boardwalk shops. All I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Laura, this is Marty. Just before Ms. Shear and Miss Hoff leave, just make sure that it, they are reminded that it is next Tuesday, the 10th at 7:00 PM for, for the continuation of this. I didn't state the time. Just wanted to make sure they were there before they left.
Thank you.
Hey Laura, I've got a quick question.
Yes, Alderman Ure?
Based on the diagram last night, see where the fencing is and the fact that they're gonna be fencing off that sidewalk on Wilson, where are we at with getting that crosswalk in the middle of Wilson there and 25? Because that's going to be critical, in my opinion, to get that because now you're really going to be forcing people to walk all over the place if they're coming from the side of town.
To my knowledge, we still have not heard back from Illinois Department of Transportation on the entry, but I will ask Gary Holm tomorrow and I'll let you know.
Yeah, we've, we've made three inquiries to the state and we're told that they're studying it. I will repeat what I've said before. I don't believe that the state will make any changes or add additional crosswalks. But that's, I mean, they're, they're studying and we've followed up with them three times now.
Yeah, I think it might need some escalation from us then, from elected officials just to, just, it's gonna be critical that, you know, talking, just listening to business owners and just their peers in construction in general. And then let's add in the fact that the sidewalk that people use to get to multiple of those businesses right now is going to be closed. So I think we need to escalate this somehow and get some contacts to figure out who to talk to and ask that question.
Clarification, which sidewalk are you referring to as closed? The Wilson Street adjacent to the project? Because the, the whole sidewalk opened, will be open in front of the businesses located on Wilson Street.
No, I understand that, but people that are coming from, you know, the near east side there that would normally walk down that sidewalk to get to Boca Ditos or Oak and Swine won't be able to use that sidewalk. So they'll have to cross on the south side of the street, walk down, cross over 25, cross over Wilson, cross over River to get there. And now they've, and probably if they're already on that side of the street, they've crossed over. And now they've, and probably if they're already on that side of the street, they've crossed over Wilson once to get to the south side of Wilson, depending on where they're coming from. I mean, it's gonna be circuitous for somebody to walk, so at least shaping off some of that and making it a little bit more pedestrian friendly, I think, is critical.
Okay, does anybody else have any others? Okay, hearing done, uh, motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved.
Here, a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Hey, it's only eight-ten, what do we do for the next four hours?
Not sitting here to you.
Good night again.
All right.
Good night again.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thanks.
Bye, everybody. Thank you very much.